Good afternoon, everybody. All the order in December twenty four meeting. Chief of County Planning Commission, regular meeting. And we have a court. And you have. For the minutes. The lines.
I I mean, we can prove them with the exception of what you said, um.
I don't know if we should leave it like it is.
Okay.
You were chairman for the day.
Okay, that's good.
And so with this.
Yeah, I'll move, we move, we approve them in.
Okay, well, congratulations.
There you go.
I I will correct that. I I will correct that and put Tom's name back on there if it's okay with you all.
Oh, yeah.
That's the only thing I'm ready. So, uh, we have a second. Next second it is. A most favorite, I. Thank you.
All right, Tyler, would you mind? Give us some business side. Uh, new business, uh, kinda, kinda old business. This is the third time that ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six has come before the planning commission. Went before town council on November twentieth. And there were, uh, some changes made at that meeting, which resulted in, uh, this being brought back before the planning commission. Um, the most substantive change that occurred, uh, at at the last reading with town council was that the, uh, limited short term rental, uh, permits that were for, uh, full time residents to be able to rent for up to seventy two days a year. That permit class was removed. And upon corresponding changes that you, uh, see in the summary of changes that was included in the agenda package are, uh, kind of ripples, uh, from the removal of that, such as, uh, just for example, uh, changing the provisional short term rental permits from class C to class B because the limited permit was previously class B, uh, updating the fee schedule to remove the limited permits. Another change that did occur was that there was a point system, uh, that's referenced in there in terms of violations of the, uh, short term rental ordinance. Uh, they did change, uh, the two point violation class, um, which was exceeding maximum occupancy, renting for less than two days and renting less than an entire unit to, uh, three point violations. You guys have any questions about any of the items that were listed in that summary of changes? Or if Joe, if you have anything that you'd like to add? Put it up to the rest of the group.
Yeah, I would just add, there was, um, a couple other changes, if you remember, in prior versions of the ordinance. We had, um, highlighted some sections, um, that were tied to another companion ordinance that was pending before council. Um, and that ordinance was amending some sections in chapter eighteen, primarily trash, parking, and a few other things. Um, at this time, council still has not taken any action on that ordinance. So you'll also see some of the references to the provisions that were in that ordinance because they haven't been adopted. Those have also been struck from this draft. If council between now and the effective date of this ordinance, which would be from the current year starting May first, if they were to go in and adopt that ordinance or some version of that ordinance, we may have to put some of that language back in. Um, but I'm not taking any action on that ordinance right now. We can't refer to a section that doesn't exist. So we struck all that from this draft. Okay.
Joe, um, help me remember, the four percent is for seventy two days being removed. That's the one we talked about that we didn't know how it was gonna work out. So we had a, uh, review in two years, correct? And that's the one we had.
That's what was in the original.
Right, so that goes to the review.
Well, in the original, it was in the second reading draft.
Right.
Um, council amended, so we put in, um, that people could get them during two, the first two years the ordinance was in effect. When they get them, they would be valid for two years, but we wouldn't issue any new ones after two years. And the ones that were issued would expire two years after they were issued. All that's now been stripped from this version.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to go back to the point you made about the, um, item that has, is before the council or the the ordinance, um, dealing with behavior. Seems to me that when we took up short term rentals or when the issue was debated for many years, there were two factors involved in what people were concerned about. First, the volume of people, the caps, dealing with. The second was behavior of people, tenants and probably homeowners too for that matter. But nonetheless, sort of behavioral issues. As I understand it, we've taken any rules dealing with those issues out of the DSO. Probably makes sense, as you and I have talked about, because, you know, what really went with for some other zoning rules, there there are more behavior issues. Um, but that means that taking them out, we now have no rules. We have no enforcement or any criteria by which people would be judged for the behavior that they or their tenants have. So it seems to me that it's important for the council to take up this other ordinance before this short term ordinance goes into effect, at least before then. Because if otherwise, we're really not responding to, I think, one of the major concerns that the people in this community have had. And we're we're ending up then relying upon the, uh, property owners association who has no real, real enforcement, uh, powers, particularly where it comes to the issue of permits. Um, so I would like, I don't know what we could do or perhaps the messages that we could send, uh, to council. Uh, and I don't know whether you all share my concern, maybe not, maybe I'm the only one that feels this way. But, uh, anyway, that's my thoughts for how.
Agreed, very valid point, um. And I to add to that. Supo has a part to play in this as well. So I think a full understanding of how that coordinates may answer some of the questions that you raised.
Yeah.
Or at least allow us a direction.
Right, other than the, yeah, I think, I think we both have a role in this area. I think that's, that's my point.
There's been discussions with Supo regarding this issue.
Uh, I don't know that there's been official discussions, there's been some discussions. Um, they did submit, um, it was either header on behalf of the board or came through the board. I don't know, I mean, actually submitted it, but they did submit a, um, written comment. The, um, public hearing, um, kind of saying a lot of these things are regulated by Supo and their preference would be that they continue to be regulated by Supo. You know, we we have the same comment that, um, I think Mary Jo just made is, Supo may be able to enforce their rules. There's, there's definitely some limitations to that. Um, one, obviously, they don't have jurisdiction on anything, it's not subject to Supo. So if we don't have anything on the books, if you have a violation elsewhere, not a violation because we, they're not violating any town ordinance. The the ones that would most frequently have, I would think some overlap would primarily be, you know, parking, trash, noise, noise was not recommended to go in. This version of the ordinance that council's tabled, but, um, that's another one where I think there is some overlap. One of the limitations, as Mary Jo mentioned, is the town has the ability to withhold, suspend, and revoke permits for multiple violations, as long as it's a violation of our ordinance. If we don't have an ordinance on the books, then Supo can regulate it, but you can theoretically have a property, you know, that might have twenty violations. If they were violations of our ordinance, we could revoke their ability to rent. Supo doesn't have the ability to do that, so they would just continue potentially racking up violations and, you know, really no recourse to restrict any further rental activity on there. Unless Supo and and, you know, impose some H and Y regulations where they can prohibit it, um, rental activities, but today I haven't heard of any intention or desire of doing that.
So it sounds like that we have the enforcement ability, but Supo does not.
Well, we both have the ability to enforce. If we had, you know, the same or similar language, uh, on the books, that was one of the comments that they made. You know, you could be getting into a situation where they may be violating both rules and have two sets of enforcement for one violation, which definitely could happen because they would be violating our rules and Supo's rules. They, they would have the ability to enforce their rules, but it would have no bearing. Um, you know, so they can give warnings, they could give fines, those type things. But it would have no bearing on the status of a property owner's ability to rent. Whereas if the town had rules and they were cited for municipal violations, is we would be able to, uh, either suspend or revoke their short term rental permit. Uh, but without us having anything on the books, we basically take a step back and it would just become purely P O A issue.
I think that's a huge problem. I think that's, if if somebody continues to violate the rules, somehow we've got to be able to pull that permit. And if Supo can't do it, then it seems like the town needs to step in and be in that position to do it.
And I agree.
I mean, take it to the extreme. Let's say we've got someone who's just completely flaunting the rules. And essentially, what you're saying is we would have no ability to pull their permit to rent their, to rent their home or their, or their condo.
Uh, if if all they were doing, like, let's just say, for example, parking in a yard. That would be regulated by Supo but would not be in the town ordinance. So if you have a property where you have frequent violations, they would not be violating our ordinance, so we could not take any action to suspend or revoke their permit. They may still get, you know, fines every time they do it. For Supo, but there would be, um, you know, based on the the current way it's set up, there would be no action taken against their ability to rent.
And and just, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this doesn't go into effect until May first, right?
Correct.
So everything stays on the book.
Yeah, our, right now, we do have a couple provisions, um, that will stay on the books until new ordinance takes effect. The, um, the proposed companion ordinance that council's tabled, um, would have removed those items from our DSO, which really, in retrospect, they never should have been there to begin with. Um, and I, when I have Mary Jo the other day, I use the example of, if someone leaves out a trash can under our ordinance, um, that becomes a zoning violation. So our typical process for a zoning viol, and that can be rental, non rental, any, any property. Um, generally, our process is we send a letter and give them, I think it's either fifteen or thirty days, um, to address the zoning violation. Um, and if they don't, then, um, we can issue an ordinance summons. They also have the ability to appeal because it's under, um, the zoning ordinance. They could appeal the zoning administrator's determination to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that's just not an appropriate way to handle, um, nuisance type stuff. That should be in our general code of ordinances. Um, so this version would strike that language from, uh, the zoning ordinance. Council can add it back in, they can take it word for word and put it into the town code. When it's in the town code, then it's, it's no longer a zoning ordinance. You don't have to go through all those same steps that we would go through for, um, you know, a zoning violation, somebody building something without a permit or something like that. Um, we could just go out, if there's a violation, we can, uh, issue an ordinance summons and they would come with order, um, pay the fine. So council would still have until, uh, April thirtieth if they want to take action uh, on any of those provisions, but, um, at this point, that would be purely a, a policy decision for council to make.
Can, Tyler, can you go to page fifty seven? I'm sorry, it's fifty two, it's fifty seven on the PDF.
Fifty two, okay.
So if you go, go up a little bit higher and you can see revocation. So essentially, it seems like what we need to do is coordinate with Supo such that if there are particular issues that they need to have addressed, then it should be included in this paragraph, such that if it gets to a point that the, uh, the revocation could occur.
Yeah, what what we're saying is we don't have the authority to enforce Supo's rules. So if we don't have anything on the books, they have not violated any provision of town ordinance.
Understand, but also that Supo, Supo cannot revocate a permit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it seems as if we need to get together with Supo, figure out where there are potential issues or current issues, amend this paragraph here so that if we've got continued violations, right, right now, they could, they could continue to find as much as they want, but the own, the owner of the property could continue to rent. And it seems like that that's a, that that's a problem, that that's a loophole in this, and that we should get together with them and coordinate this paragraph.
I'm saying it's not necessarily this paragraph. Um, this paragraph can still work in its current form. What has to happen for us to be able to do that is we have to put those rules on the books. Um, because it has to be a violation of a town ordinance, which we issue with summons and they either plead guilty or are found guilty before we can take any action on their permit. Just having Supo rules, that has no bearing on any of our ordinances. Um, if council were to adopt that separate ordinance, um, then any of those violations, if they take place on a rental property, the way this is worded, um, if they have multiple violations, we would have the ability to, uh, revoke the permit. But it would have to be a violation of a town ordinance.
Understand.
And the only way, and the only way to do that is for us to put that on our books.
So how do we coordinate with, how do we coordinate with Supo to have the desired effect here, that if we've got a bad actor, we can pull their permit?
I don't want to speak for Supo, um, I I read their public comment, um. This is me summarizing it, but it was kind of a town stay in your lane, we'll enforce our stuff, you enforce your stuff. Um, if anyone wants to come from Supo and give us a different reading of that, but that was kind of how, how I interpreted that to be, um. It didn't strike me as there was a desire to have much coordination, but they didn't want overlap and they wanted their rules to be enforced by them.
So maybe it's the first things first.
Yeah, I mean, al- ultimately, that that's, the town is not governed by Supo. So if council decides we want to have these rules, they can adopt the rules. Um, you know, whether the Poa consents to them or not, that's the town council's police power as a municipal governing body. But that ultimately is a policy decision whether or not council wants to have that duplication, um, of, um, rules at both the town level and Supo level. Um, to date, they haven't, they haven't taken any action on that ordinance. I I don't know if they will decide to do so or not. Um, but if they don't by April thirtieth, then if they, all the nuisance type provisions would just fall strictly on their Supo and would have no bearing on individuals.
So question, um, if council takes action, does that come back here or not?
No, that ordinance is a general town ordinance, so only amendments to the DSO, um, which are zoning ordinances, um, only those could afford planning commission.
Well, the reason I was going there is, I mean, through a hope of this, and one of our concerns is that there isn't enforcement in place. Is there a way to make that a condition to approval? So that we, we get at least the review?
It it's not necessarily the enforcement, it's, it's the language that this is a municipal violation. That's what would need to be in the books. I don't see any issue as to why you can't incorporate that as part of your recommendation, whether it's a recommendation included in your recommendation on the pending ordinance or a separate standalone vote to recommend council action on that. Don't really know, there's a right layer, uh, to do that. But if that's something that the planning commission, um, feels strongly about, I think you can make that recommendation, even though it doesn't necessarily fall under the purview of the planning commission.
Well, we're not. It's a town council decision, it's. So that's, it it that, is there some understanding that the way you?
I think that's, I think making it a separate recommendation might make the most sense because that way you don't kind of confuse up approval of what was before us. But just make the recommendation to the council that they, you know, the, the other ordinances before, before the end of April.
Can I craft a motion?
Okay, um, I move that we approve without conditions the, um, uh, proposed amendments to, um, to the DSO. And in addition, I, I move that we, um, agree to a, a message, a recommendation to the council that they take up the ordinances, behavioral ordinances, uh, before the end of April. So. Maybe two.
The motions.
A double motion.
I I think we probably deal with your original one first and then we can come back to this, this Manning's oh nine language.
You're doing a motion, you're doing a little.
Yes.
Thank God.
So let's approve, uh, without condition that the pending changes to the DSO.
That's motion one.
Motion one.
Please say. Say. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Good, thank you.
And then I move that we recommend to the council that they, uh, bring up the ordinances or that they craft and bring up ordinances, um, dealing with, um, behavior and, and other items, um, as part of the, uh, town ordinance. That they do it before, uh, the end of April, that would be our recommendation.
And what was the number of that, can you, that?
That's twenty twenty four dash.
Okay, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four oh nine. As this ordinance, I'm like.
Read what she's, read what she just said.
So I, I wrote that Ms. Manning is urging council to take up the livability ordinance oh nine before April thirtieth. And if necessary, make it part of the town code. Just let me get down.
What's method of, I'd like to add to that, what's method of twenty four hour enforcement?
I think, I think Ms. Manning would have to agree to make that part of her motion.
Okay.
What, what, Stan, what did you add?
Twenty four, uh, method for the town to have some kind of twenty four hours. What's your sense of bearing? I I brought this up in previous meetings on this one.
Yeah.
And we, this is a town without an official police or armed. So I, to me, it's just been skipped, we were just bringing our wheelchairs. Most of the problem is the limiting, uh, rentals is because, you know, behavior problems that affected our fellow constituents. But we don't have a method of enforcement. We don't have our own police. So the whole thing doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make any sense. I'm offered, I guess we'll do this thing in piecemeal. Pass this, we just did it. And then go on to see if we can't get a, uh, there's always, there's always more, you know, ordinances, then enforcement.
So.
Where do you, where the town wants to go with that, I don't know.
So we have a motion that's been amended. Has the amendment been seconded?
Not yet.
The ad stands.
It sounds like it didn't cut out the likes of discussion.
That's fine.
Um, just general, um, this noise, noise, parking, all of these, is it a real problem? Are we making a mountain out of, I mean, I'm not, I'm kind of isolated, so I'm, I'm not aware. Is this, has this been a problem? Parking and the noise, or is it just one or two people squeaky wheels, so to speak, talking? I guess my question is, how significant is it?
I I won't say it doesn't exist, because we, we definitely received complaints, um, and we, we do have enforcement officers. Now, granted, they're not twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. But we do have our, um, daytime code enforcement, and we supplement that with our time, uh, evening and weekend, and we tend to, um, brand that up during the peak season. Um, I would say our code enforcement officers probably observe more violations than reported to us by, you know, neighbors or through our, our code enforcement portal. Um, you know, Mike, our, our daytime code enforcement officer, he, he tends to be on top of trash. Um, so he sees when the cans are left out, those type things. Um, so we, we do see some. I wouldn't say we're overrun with complaints or violations by, uh, any means. Um, we do have some who I would say are probably more sensitive, um, than others when they witness a violation. Um, and I mean, we've received complaints about like, right now, we require if you have a garbage can, it has to be screened for review. And we got a complaint, like, you could literally see like one inch of the garbage can. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, is that really like a death violation? No, not deflected the street, I think that's more of a nuisance if it's out there for, you know, days on end, but something that's substantially screened for all but one inch. Um, we, we did, when we were working with the, um, the committee the council created, we pulled together a list, at that time, it was probably close to a year's worth of data. Fifty something.
Violations? Not a substantive, uh, I mean, per year.
Um, none of them was that, that either were reported to us or we observed.
Is it, are there? I I guess the question is, are, are there a lot of noise violations?
We, we don't have a noise ordinance.
Yeah, right, right now, we don't have a noise ordinance. So if somebody were to call us, there's nothing that we have on the books that we can enforce. We do have.
I I'm sorry, so let's take, let's take the extreme here. You've got somebody is renting their house and day after day, they're playing loud music. There's not a darn thing that we could do.
There's nothing the town can do.
Or, and and Supo could, Supo could issue them, uh, a ticket.
Yeah, I mean, that's within their discretion, but I think Supo, last time I looked at their rules, they don't have like specific criteria or anything, it's just kind of like a generic, like enjoyment language, if it's something that's, um, adversely impacting a neighbor's quiet enjoyment of their property, uh, then it's a violation of their rules. But, um, so Supo can, but the town, we don't have anything on the books.
But, and I don't want to, I don't mean to make a mountain out of a mole here, here. But if this continued, you know, day after day, week after week, essentially, we would have to scramble to put something in somebody's book so we could revoke, we could revoke an, a permit. And so it seems as if what we need to do is decide if there's anything important here, i.e. noise or trash or parking, and I guess work with Supo so that if there's a, a, a point that a property owner gets to that deserves to have their permit pulled, that we can do that, right? Right now, there's no, there's nothing, there's no mechanism in place to do that.
That's correct.
Okay. But with that said, I just say, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill here, but uh I'm willing to support uh both of these and uh let's move forward.
You have a second, I'll need a moment.
Yeah, Mr. Nick, second.
We need to discuss. We ready for a vote? All those in favor, remain.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Station stays. Thank you, Andrew.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. Um let's fly. A reminder of annual training prior to the end of the year. Questions, comments, new business?
On the training.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. On the training thing, um it occurred to me in going through all that that there's some very interesting and I think valuable documents as part of the training. And I wondered if new members of the planning commission shouldn't be given book with that contains those documents. I think it might might be a a useful preparation, as opposed to waiting until you're reminded that you're supposed to do these things. Anyway, just a thought.
No, and there there are some good templates and resource materials that was a planning commissioner in another place, we we got packaged just like that, we started. I think that's a great suggestion. To that, thank you. And I didn't want to leave out a moment to thank Stan for his bot service and his friendship, you know, and his caring, I mean.
Appreciate that, and I appreciate the the privilege of serving with everyone here. Appreciate members. And I would particularly want to thank the town administrators and, you know, like, there's a lot of heavy work and heavy lifting. Couldn't have done without them. Thank you for the privilege of being with you. Gary Hurls.
So when I, so when I hear you going into enforcement, enforcement business now.
He's gonna be our midnight, midnight enforcement officer.
With a uniform, with a cape. Okay. Lord Sykes, didn't get to acknowledge you earlier, thanks for being on with us. And.
I move that we adjourn.
And we should adjourn, say a. Thank you. Ben, Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Merry New Year.
Merry Christmas, all.